They agreed to give us a little more time this morning so we could have Wallen on the broadcast, and I thought it might be nice to have each of you sing a song.
In my next line.
Yeah, yeah, that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen today. We are moving on now to talk about another of the school board races, this time District Six. And in studio with us this morning, we have Bradley Buchanan, we have Terry Hill, we have Sandra Rocliffe, and Tamara Shepherd. Good morning to all of you, and welcome to the broadcast.
Good morning, Halloran.
I want to start by just learning a little bit about each of you before we get into the nuts and bolts of why you're running, and the issues that are important to you, and early voting is going on now. And so I want to just start over here with you, Ms. Shepherd. Tell me a little bit about yourself. Who are you? Where are you from? What do you do?
Well, I'm a Knox County resident of 40 years. I am a parent of two. My kids are virtually grown, 17 and 22 years old. And my older child is a first-year Knox County Schools teacher. I volunteered in the schools for many years, 15-plus, and have long had this interest. I did pick up a qualifying petition to run for the board 10 years ago. The timing wasn't right. It's much better for me now, and there are issues that compel me to become involved, get involved in that capacity these days.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Up next, Terry Hill. My sister's name is Terry Hill. I actually talked to Terry Hill every day, the other one. And so, but it's good to have you in studio today. Terry Hill, tell me a little bit about yourself.
Thanks. Good to be here. I have retired from Knox County Schools after over 30 years in the school system.
What did you do in the school system?
I was a school social worker and lead consultant. So the schools are what I know. It's been a part of my life for 30 years. And I look forward to the opportunity to be able to continue on the policy side of things. I've got two children that went to Knox County Schools, have since graduated and gone on to college, successful women. I've got two grandchildren now that are attending Knox County Schools. And you can bet that I'm going to be sure that they get the very best they can out of our school system, as me being their school board member for District Six.
Thank you for being here today.
You bet.
Sandra Rocliffe, welcome to the broadcast. Good to see you again. I know your husband, Gary?
Yep.
He's one of my buds. I gotta give that in full disclosure. A main man, but thank you for being on the broadcast today. Tell me about yourself. Who are you?
Well, I'm Sandra. I have four children, all of whom have either graduated or currently attending Knox County Schools. I've been a volunteer parent advocate for teachers, students, education for 15-plus years through PTA and other organizations that I serve with. And, you know, I was kind of the volunteer parent who, back a long time ago, was doing this back before education kind of came, became the buzzword here in Knox County. I've got a unique perspective in that I've been in the schools, I've gotten to know a lot of teachers throughout the years. But I've also served on a lot of the committees in the central office as well. So I see both sides of the coin, and what the, what the issues are, and what we've got to, what we've got to work on, on both ends of the, of the coin. So that's kind of why I'm running. And actually, I would sing a song for you if you want me to. It's called "Row, Row, Row the Vote." And I hope everybody will get out early and vote, so you don't have to stand in any long lines.
All right. Thank you for being here today. Bradley Buchanan, welcome to the broadcast. This is my first time meeting you, but it's good to have you in studio. Thank you for being here today. Who's Bradley Buchanan?
Yeah, yeah, great to be here. Brad Buchanan is a father of four, used to be an educator, taught in the classroom for three years. I'm currently a computer guy. My wife is a school teacher with Knox County Schools. You know, with having, with my four kids being younger, they're, my three oldest are actually currently Knox County Schools. My little boy's gonna be there, here pretty soon. You know, I'm fully invested with the kids in the schools for the next 15 years. And certainly, you know, with my wife also being a school teacher, and, and you know, myself having the training to be a school teacher, realize, you know, what the teachers are looking for, you know, and the experiences and all the training that the teachers bring into the classroom, you know, that we need to let them, we need to let those teachers teach and reach those kids.
Wow. Well, it's good to have all of you in studio today. We have, we have a good amount of time here where we can talk and work through the issues, and we'll take a quick break. When we come back, I'll- Cliff and Tamara Shepherd. More in just a moment. 908 on the Triple H Morning Show, News Talk 98, 7 W O K I. Early voting, by the way, is going on right now in Knox County, in the Knox County Primary Election Wednesday. It started on Wednesday, April 16th, and it runs through Thursday, May the 1st. Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays, from 11:00 to 5:00. There are 10 early voting locations, and you can get this information at the Knox County Election Commission's website, which is easy to access just by Googling the Knox County Election Commission. There's also a sample ballot there. If you print it off, it's 11 pages long. I recommend that you actually look at it before you go vote. There's a lot of stuff on there. And this may be one of the most important election cycles for the next decade, because we're resetting the entire legislative infrastructure of our community. You have the sheriff's race, you have County Mayor, he's not opposed this time, but then you have several school board seats, I think four seats that are up in districts 1, 4, 6, 7, and 9. 1, 4, 6, 7. Okay, five seats that are up. I gotta learn to count. That's why I don't get to be on the school board. Counting is essential. But, so, we have the opportunity to talk to a lot of candidates. And in studio today, I am very pleased to have in our studio this morning, four candidates running in the 6th District, Brad Buchanan, Terry Hill, Sandra Rocliffe, and Tamara Shepherd. Thank you all for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Would, um, let me start with you, Tamara. I want to know your why, but as a setup to the why, would you describe for our listeners, the 6th District, in terms of neighborhoods and schools?
Oh, sure. It's sprawling. Within the city limits, we have three schools, Northwest Middle, Norwood, and Pleasant Ridge Elementary. The district bends out through the Karnes and Hardin Valley community. It picks up the three Karnes Schools, the two Hardin Valley, and Bald Camp Elementary.
All right.
So that's the lay of the land.
What is your why?
Well, I'll cut to the chase. I had been watching events fold, unfold locally, that I understand within the larger context of events unfolding nationally. And Halloran, there is a move afoot to privatize public education. That's not a conspiracy theory. It's easily documented. Bill Gates is the power broker, and the U.S. Chamber of Commerce is the delivery mechanism. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce has, in fact, laid out their plan for the reauthorization of ESA. You probably don't know that federal law is ESA. That is the expired no child left behind law. The chamber has laid out what they would like to see in the reauthorized federal law. And they do want opportunities for their member businesses to deliver public education nationally. They want private school vouchers. They want charter schools. And many, many, many of the events we see unfolding locally and at the state level are, in fact, driven by this national agenda. I'm aware of the agenda, and I want to respond to it locally.
Oh, that's yours. All right. Terry Hill, what is your why?
After spending 30 years in Knox County Schools, I have seen a lot of changes happen in the school system. I understand what the barriers are that keep our kids from learning. I understand what the obstacles are that prevent change from happening at the central office level. And I will tell you, it's been very disturbing to see how the morale overall has, has disintegrated within our school system. When I retired last year, I had the opportunity to kind of sit back and catch my breath, and barely did that, and had people coming to me saying, you know, Terry, this is an open seat. The schools are what you know. It's what you're about. And I do understand. I understand not only from the school side, but I understand from the school board side. My, my family has, has been involved in, in school boards. My daughter is a disclaimer, is Cindy Buttry. She served on the school board for eight years. So I know up close and personal what is involved in handling this job. And it's easily a full-time job if you do it right. And I have the time and the commitment and the knowledge base to be able to, to bring to the school board seat.
912 on the Triple H Morning Show, News Talk 98, 7 W O K I. If you're just tuning in, these are candidates for school board in the 4th District. Sandra Rocliffe, what is your why?
Well, I'll be honest, Halloran. I had originally not planned to run. And as this election and the talk of, of education became really a focal point in our community, it seemed to me that the focus was moving away from student achievement and the higher expectations that we have in the school system been really good at incorporating in the last five years. What I saw was a movement more away from that and focused on other things. And for me, the bottom line is student achievement. It's, it's creating opportunities for our kids so that as they leave the 12th grade, they are either ready for college, if that's their choice, or some type of career. Because those are the two things in, in my mind that they're going to create taxpaying citizens. And that, to me, is the dream.
Was there anything that happened that made you go, you weren't gonna run. Was there anything that happened particularly that made you go, I gotta do this now?
Just the, just the move, like I said before, away from student achievement and more toward just whether folks are angry about things, or just a turn toward focus on employment and, and jobs and that kind of thing, as opposed to our, our students.
Brad Buchanan, what's your why?
Um, you know, if we want to point to, to one singular thing, it really is the results of the survey. You know, what we find out that 70% of teachers, you know, are not happy with the leadership being presented at the district level. You know, the good news here, you know, and the great news about Knox County Schools, is that only, you know, you know, 30% of those are-
(pause)
You know, in their schools. That means that they love those kids, that they love teaching, and that they want to have the freedom to get back to teaching their kids in the classroom. That we need to refocus our school district back on the classroom, back on the kids, and back on the teachers, to make sure that we do the most we can with, let's admit, our, you know, our limited resources here inside of Knox County. And, you know, as we continue to go, you know, after that survey, you know, we continue to see a, a board that is, is not doing things for the teachers. You know, one of the things you can look at is, you know, the, the current budget. And while you say, well, they're trying to do something for the teachers, you know, they're trying to get that raise in there. But, you know, during this, all this discussion, I haven't heard raises mentioned by the teachers. And I've actually heard teachers stand up and say, this is not about money. You know, that this is a, this is a lack of respect. This is the lack of autonomy in our classroom. You know, we're professionals, and would like to be treated that way. And it, and if we can treat them that way, and give them the freedom that they need, that they can get back to teaching, reaching those kids.
All right. So let me go around the horn now and ask you about Superintendent of Knox County Schools. Because should you be elected to the school board, you will be one of his bosses. What do you think of Superintendent McIntyre? And let me mix it up a little bit. Let me start with you, Terry Hill.
Okay. I think Dr. McIntyre is doing what he believes is best for the kids of Knox County. I don't agree with his decisions in many areas. I was very, very disturbed about the vote that was taken in December to extend Dr. McIntyre's contract. I think people realize now that it was not a vote to fire. It was a vote to merely add four years onto an existing three-year contract. I'm on the record as stating, had I been a board member at that time, that I would have made a motion to postpone that vote, to see if, in fact, the time has come when Dr. McIntyre is ready to address issues, then in fact, the school board could change, like too much teacher, teacher testing, like evaluation issues. It was ti, it was time for change to occur. Had that motion failed, and the vote could not have been postponed, I would not have voted to add a fourth year onto his contract.
Sandra Rocliffe, what do you think of Dr. McIntyre?
Well, overall, I believe that Dr. McIntyre is doing what the Board of Education of Knox County has set forth for him, the direction that the board feels like our, our school system should, should move in. So I think he has performed at, at a level that is what the board asked of him. Now, if the board chooses to change that direction, certainly, you know, we've got some talking, I guess, to do with Dr. McIntyre. But at the end of the day, Halloran, I hope that we can make this election about something other than whether Dr. McIntyre sits in that seat, or whether it's someone else who's sitting in that seat. Because at the end of the day, what we're called to do in our public schools is to educate children. And at the end of the day, that's what I want to see us do to the very best of our ability, whether it's Dr. McIntyre sitting there or someone else.
Tamara Shepherd, what do you think of Dr. McIntyre?
I'm displeased. I don't think that Dr. McIntyre is leading our schools. I think that the Knoxville Chamber is leading our schools. And I will again refer back to this larger context. The driver nationally is the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. We have not written our own school system strategic plan. We have turned that responsibility over to the Knoxville Chamber. And so what we have gotten from the Knoxville Chamber is a business model that does not translate into public education. We have seen a narrowing of public education. We have seen an extraordinary focus on standardized testing. It boils down to, how do we define public education? What do we want to happen in the classroom? I do not think that it's all-day, every-day English and math. I think that public education has a far more broad mission than that. And that's where I fault Dr. McIntyre. He has folded, so to speak, to this, this business model of what it means to deliver public education. And it's not the vision that teachers and parents share.
Bradley Buchanan, what do you think of Dr. McIntyre?
I, I don't think that the current board has set a location where they would like to see Knox County Schools go. And I don't believe that the current board has done what they needed to do effectively to be Dr. McIntyre's employer. And so I think that, to a certain extent, he's, he's an employee without guidance. And he needs to be provided with much more detailed guidance. He needs to be held to a level bar, as opposed to just being able to, you know, give himself a star rating based upon, you know, what minimal guidance he's been given. We need to give him clear goals and have him work toward those goals. And if those task goals don't get achieved, you know, then that's gonna, you know, that's gonna count against him. So, you know, do I like the, the current direction that Knox County Schools are headed under his leadership? No, I don't.
All right. This is interesting conversation. We are talking to the candidates for school board in the 6th District. During this break, would you all consider money and teacher pay raises? It's budget time. We had the mayor of Knox County on, on yesterday. We have the superintendent on, on Thursday morning to talk about this, but it's budget time. And there is a big difference between the school board and county commission. County Commission cuts the checks. School board decides what to do with the checks. And school board goes to county commission and says, this is what we need. And county commission says, nice. This is what you're gonna get. Well, we have the candidates in studio, Bradley Buchanan, Terry Hill, Sandra Rocliffe, and Tamara Shepherd. Thank you all for being here this morning.
Thanks, Halloran.
Thank you.
Terry Hill said, how, how much longer are we gonna go? I said, three hours.
Bring me lunch.
I'm just thinking about me. I have to do that every day, four and a half. Thank you all for being here today, and thank you for running for office. I commend people who step up to run for office. Anybody that hasn't run for office, even if you've lived with people that have held public office, you don't know what it's like until you actually run for office. It's a whole different, it's a whole different thing. It's kind of like, um, I won't, I won't use that analogy. It's, it's different. It's just very, I just had to self-edit. So thank you for stepping up to run for office and being involved and, and committed in your community. Let's talk about money for just a moment. Knox County Mayor Tim Burchett was here yesterday, and we were talking about the budget. And he said, Halloran, we've got a $730 million budget. 400-plus million dollars of that budget goes to education. We write the check. We write the check for an increase every year. If they want to give a pay raise, then the school board has the responsibility to look at their numbers, their big number, and carve out the pay raise from that money. We just don't have it this year. Now, that has created a, an interesting set of reactions in the community. And it's, so you have county commissioners, and you have school board members. And school board members are concerned about the quality of education. They are the governing body. They are the boss of the, of the superintendent. So they are concerned with policy and procedure and kids and all that stuff. And they're given a lump sum of money. And there's this dynamic tension between county commission and the school board. Let's talk about the money. If you were sitting on the board right now, county mayor, county commission said, look, you got enough. I mean, here it is. It's an increase. You figure out the pay raise. What's your response to that? And let me start with you, Brad Buchanan.
You know, I, I think that's- At their local level, you know, in their schools. That means that they love those kids, that they love teaching, and that they want to have the freedom to get back to teaching their kids in the classroom. That we need to refocus our school district back on the classroom, back on the kids, and back on the teachers, to make sure that we do the most we can with, let's admit, our, you know, our limited resources here inside of Knox County. And, you know, as we continue to go, you know, after that survey, you know, we continue to see a, a board that is, is not doing things for the teachers. You know, one of the things you can look at is, you know, the, the current budget. And while you say, well, they're trying to do something for the teachers, you know, they're trying to get that raise in there. But, you know, during this, all this discussion, I haven't heard raises mentioned by the teachers. And I've actually heard teachers stand up and say, this is not about money. You know, that this is a, this is a lack of, you know, we're professionals, and would like to be treated that way. And it, and if we can treat them that way, and give them the freedom that they need, that they can get back to teaching, reaching those kids.
All right. So let me go around the horn now and ask you about Superintendent of Knox County Schools. Because should you be elected to the school board, you will be one of his bosses. What do you think of Superintendent McIntyre? And let me mix it up a little bit. Let me start with you, Terry Hill.
Okay. I think Dr. McIntyre is doing what he believes is best for the kids of Knox County. I don't agree with his decisions in many areas. I was very, very disturbed about the vote that was taken in December to extend Dr. McIntyre's contract. I think people realize now that it was not a vote to fire. It was a vote to merely add four years onto an existing three-year contract. I'm on the record as stating, had I been a board member at that time, that I would have made a motion to postpone that vote, to see if, in fact, the time has come when Dr. McIntyre is ready to address issues, then in fact, the school board could change, like too much teacher, teacher testing, like evaluation issues. It was ti, it was time for change to occur. Had that motion failed, and the vote could not have been postponed, I would not have voted to add a fourth year onto his contract.
Sandra Rocliffe, what do you think of Dr. McIntyre?
Well, overall, I believe that Dr. McIntyre is doing what the Board of Education of Knox County has set forth for him, the direction that the board feels like our, our school system should, should move in. So I think he has performed at, at a level that is what the board asked of him. Now, if the board chooses to change that direction, certainly, you know, we've got some talking, I guess, to do with Dr. McIntyre. But at the end of the day, Halloran, I hope that we can make this election about something other than whether Dr. McIntyre sits in that seat, or whether it's someone else who's sitting in that seat. Because at the end of the day, what we're called to do in our public schools is to educate children. And at the end of the day, that's what I want to see us do to the very best of our ability, whether it's Dr. McIntyre sitting there or someone else.
Tamara Shepherd, what do you think of Dr. McIntyre?
I'm displeased. I don't think that Dr. McIntyre is leading our schools. I think that the Knoxville Chamber is leading our schools. And I will again refer back to this larger context. The driver nationally is the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. We have not written our own school system strategic plan. We have turned that responsibility over to the Knoxville Chamber. And so what we have gotten from the Knoxville Chamber is a business model that does not translate into public education. We have seen a narrowing of public education. We have seen an extraordinary focus on standardized testing. It boils down to, how do we define public education? What do we want to happen in the classroom? I do not think that it's all-day, every-day English and math. I think that public education has a far more broad mission than that. And that's where I fault Dr. McIntyre. He has folded, so to speak, to this, this business model of what it means to deliver public education. And it's not the vision that teachers and parents share.
Bradley Buchanan, what do you think of Dr. McIntyre?
I, I don't think that the current board has set a location where they would like to see Knox County Schools go. And I don't believe that the current board has done what they needed to do effectively to be Dr. McIntyre's employer. And so I think that, to a certain extent, he's, he's an employee without guidance. And he needs to be provided with much more detailed guidance. He needs to be held to a level bar, as opposed to just being able to, you know, give himself a star rating based upon, you know, what minimal guidance he's been given. We need to give him clear goals and have him work toward those goals. And if those task goals don't get achieved, you know, then that's gonna, you know, that's gonna count against him. So, you know, do I like the, the current direction that Knox County Schools are headed under his leadership? No, I don't.
All right. This is interesting conversation. We are talking to the candidates for school board in the 6th District. During this break, would you all consider money and teacher pay raises? It's budget time. We have the candidates in studio, Bradley Buchanan, Terry Hill, Sandra Rocliffe, and Tamara Shepherd. Thank you all for being here this morning.
Thanks, Halloran.
Thank you.
Terry Hill said, how, how much longer are we gonna go? I said, three hours.
Bring me lunch.
I'm just thinking about me. I have to do that every day, four and a half. Thank you all for being here today, and thank you for running for office. I commend people who step up to run for office. Anybody that hasn't run for office, even if you've lived with people that have held public office, you don't know what it's like until you actually run for office. It's a whole different, it's a whole different thing. It's kind of like, um, I won't, I won't use that analogy. It's, it's different. It's just very, I just had to self-edit. So thank you for stepping up to run for office and being involved and, and committed in your community. Let's talk about money for just a moment. Knox County Mayor Tim Burchett was here yesterday, and we were talking about the budget. And he said, Halloran, we've got a $730 million budget. 400-plus million dollars of that budget goes to education. We write the check. We write the check for an increase every year. If they want to give a pay raise, then the school board has the responsibility to look at their numbers, their big number, and carve out the pay raise from that money. We just don't have it this year. Now, that has created a, an interesting set of reactions in the community. And it's, so you have county commissioners, and you have school board members. And school board members are concerned about the quality of education. They are the governing body. They are the boss of the, of the superintendent. So they are concerned with policy and procedure and kids and all that stuff. And they're given a lump sum of money. And there's this dynamic tension between county commission and the school board. And there's this dynamic tension between county commission and the school board. Let's talk about the money. If you were sitting on the board right now, county mayor, county commission said, look, you got enough, I mean, here it is, it's an increase, you figure out the pay raise, what's your response to that? And let me start with you, Brad Buchanan.
You know, I think that's, but, you know, I believe what we need to look at the budget and the way we need to hold our budgetary priorities is to start down at the classroom level and start with the students, and work up there from the classroom level on the way out. I would like to see some more detail in the budget than what I have currently seen. But I do know, you know, one area that I've heard, you know, multiple comments about where we could make some advances in the budget, and that is to look at the use of the instructional coaches at the schools. I'm hearing from many teachers at many different schools that those instructional coaches are not getting down into the classroom, that they're not actually aiding in instruction, that they're being told actually, do not go down to the classroom, you know, to work with the kids, instead, you're only to work with the teachers. I've also heard from multiple teachers at multiple different schools that they are part of the stuff that's in place that's hurting the morale of the teachers.
So you're saying, so you're saying you could find money by eliminating instructional coaches?
And what I would do, because those coaches were moved up in those positions is because they were the best teachers in our classrooms, is what we need to do, because we're losing an amazing amount of experienced teachers out of the classroom this year. We've got one school alone that's losing over 200 years of teaching experience, is to get, have those instructional coaches come back down into the classroom and have them, have them work with the kids, so that we're not having to bring in additional teachers to handle that growth.
All right, you have a question, Tamara Shepherd.
Well, no, no, I just wanted to suggest, Terry actually heard two of us speak about allocation in the budget, because I had an observation as well.
Okay.
And I'd like to see a scrap strategic comp. We have every reason to know that strategic comp does not work. In fact, the year we adopted strategic comp in our budget, Vanderbilt came out with a study, yet another, to indicate that it does not work, it does not motivate, it does not boost student achievement. So Dr. McIntyre, I believe, and the board are very vulnerable, so long as they keep that money in there, and particularly since they keep that money in there and allow this broken teacher evaluation model to direct who's going to get those bonuses. That money could be made available for raises.
All right, anybody else have a question for anybody else in the room, before I give you guys a chance to make closing statements? Anybody else have a question?
I'm actually sitting here trying to think of a good question for you, Hal, but it's just not coming to me, so, not that you're a candidate.
All right, thank you. I'm just a candidate for a morning mayor, that's all I'm doing. So let me take just, let me take about, then about thirty seconds with each of you to give a closing statement, and thank you for being here today. It's been great to get to know you. And if part of your closing, if you would, as part of your closing statement, if you would let people know how they can contact you, if you have a website or something like that. So let me start with Tamara Shepherd.
Thank you. Let me give you my website first, if I could. It's shepherd, spelled S-H-E-P-H-E-R-D, at B-O-E dot com. I think that I would distinguish my candidacy in that I am the person, probably best renowned locally, for understanding the larger context. You've heard me say a lot about state issues and federal issues, but it's important that someone going on this Board of Education understand what's going on in the larger context. It allows them to filter the proposals they're hearing. I am the person who knew before Parthenon Group ever made their recommendations for budgetary changes they would like to see. I knew what to anticipate, I had researched it. And we need somebody on that board who can better filter the information they're getting from the superintendent and anticipate where his recommendations might take us.
All right, thank you for being here today. Terry Hill.
Halloran, I'm the only candidate that brings the experience that this job needs to the Knox County School Board. I've spent thirty years in the school system, I've been in the classroom, I've been with our kids, counseled our kids, I've been in the homes of our parents, I've worked hand-in-hand with administrators, and I've worked in central office. So I know what the obstacles are, and I know what the barriers are. I know how to get things done. I'm a problem solver, I am all about trying to bring people together and move things forward, instead of looking at everything that's wrong. We need to be positive, move forward, and I'm the candidate to do that.
How do people get in touch with you?
W W W dot TerryHillschoolboard dot com.
Sandra Ro Cliff.
So my website, Hal, is W W W dot Ro Cliff, that's Ro, as in Ro, 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 the vote, and Cliff, as in a mountain cliff with an E on the end. Ro Cliff for Schools dot Weebly dot com. You know, Hal, I'm the candidate, at the end of the day, who really is focused on student achievement. We've made huge gains in Knox County Schools in student achievement. You can argue all day long about the issues of teacher morale, of instructional coaches, of how operationally there are some inefficiencies and things need to change. And I'm certainly open and willing to work on those issues. This is not a perfect system by any means, but there are great things going on in our public schools, and I know that because I'm in them every single day. And I've been in them for fifteen years. I don't have any family members who work for the system, I've never worked for the system, and most boards I sit on actually right now, that's what you need more than anything, is a person who can bring more of an objective view.
Thank you for being here today. Brad Buchanan.
Buchananforkids dot com is where you can find out more about me and link up to my Facebook group and such. The only one in the race that brings real classroom teaching experience. You know, younger kids are going to be in the system for quite a while. I'm a nuts-and-bolts type guy, I feel that we need to work together as a school board to help provide better leadership to the superintendent about where we want Knox County Schools to head, as opposed to being such a passive body. And I believe that I'm the one that could sit on that board and work with those other board members to bring teacher concerns, to bring parent concerns, and to make sure that we're doing the best job we can in educating those students, getting back to our core there.
Brad Buchanan, Terry Hill, Sandra Ro Cliff, and Tamara Shepherd, thanks for being on the Halloran Hilton Hill Morning Show this morning. Early voting is going on today from eleven until seven. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, Hal.
Thank you.
Inviting us.